Good evening, everybody. Going to go ahead and call to order the Bristol, Virginia City Council for regularly scheduled meeting today, June the 27th, 2023. Please join me in a moment of silence. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I would like to pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you all for coming out. We've got a relatively short agenda, but a lot of important stuff on here. Going to get into Mayor's Minute and Council comments. I'll just discuss a couple of upcoming events in the city to add to your calendar, be on the lookout for. Obviously, this Thursday is our final movies in Cumberland Square Park. Starts at 7:00 PM, and I can't think of what movie it is, but they've had a pretty good track record for the past couple of weeks, so I'm hoping it's another good one. Obviously, the Sounds of Summer Concert Series is going on downtown. That's a good state street event that happens every year. And June 30th, we have a worship service in Cumberland Square Park, starting at 7:00. The Bike Nights at Michael Waltrip's are on Fridays. And July the 4th, obviously, is our Independence Day Parade. Parade starts at 5:00 PM, and fireworks start at 10:00, and we're very excited to have fireworks back after a couple of years of not having them, so we're very excited for that. That's all I've got. You got anything else?
I'd like to jump in here and just say real quick. Yesterday at our Planning Commission meeting, Mr. Ed Harlow had his last meeting with us. He decided not to put his name up for reappointment. He has served this city very well on the Planning Commission. He was up here before all of us were, city council-wise, and then he also served in the US Army for two years, served in the Army Reserves for 23 years. I took notes because he has an impressive record there. So he put a lot of service into our community, into our country, so we greatly appreciate that. Just want to thank him for his service.
Absolutely. No other council comments, city manager's comments.
Yes, just as a reminder, city offices will be closed on Monday, July 3rd, and Tuesday, July 4th, to celebrate Independence Day. This past week, there was the Battle of the Badges between the Bristol, Virginia Fire Department and Police Departments against Bristol, Tennessee's Fire Department and Police Departments. Unfortunately, we were on the short end of this time, so we lost. Hopefully, we'll take back that reign next year. And then, Virginia Intermont, I know there's been some discussions on Virginia Intermont. There has been some progress being made up there. Not as quickly as I'd like, but there is progress being made, so we'll continue to stay on top of the contractors to make sure that they're getting the job done that they need to get done.
Very good, thank you. Matters to be presented by members of the public for non-agenda items. One person has signed up, and that is Samuel Meredith. As you're coming up, so basically, the way this works, so when you get up here, state your name, where you're from, green light comes on, it's three minutes, yellow light comes on, that means you have 10 seconds remaining.
Thirty.
Thirty seconds remaining. Red light comes on, time is up, so if you just kind of wrap up your thoughts. So go right ahead.
Good evening, members of the City Council. My name is Samuel Meredith, and I live at 216 Robin Road, Bristol, Tennessee. I have spoken before, and last time I spoke, I spoke a little bit on the issue of the tax increase, and I was really trying to persuade you all that maybe there would be a different option, maybe that what seems to me as ridiculous tax increase is the only way, as you all have portrayed it to be. But for now, one of the things that I want to talk to you about is one of an experience that I've had recently in Bristol, Virginia. I was on a date with my girlfriend, as is one of my favorite things to do. We were walking through Cumberland Square Park, and I have such fond memories of this park, as when I was younger with my mom. You know, me and my siblings, we would go there, we would throw frisbee, we would play baseball, we would climb around on the rocks. I'd look at the helicopter there for hours, and Mom would have to pull me away and take me home. But as I was going there this recent, just a couple of months ago, as I walked down the sidewalk, you know, I looked on the stage, and there were a bunch of people, and they were doing needles and drugs. Everywhere I looked around me, there were used drugs, and there was a lot of other people doing similar things nearby. And that's just really the state that the city is in. Downtown and in a lot of other places, it's really not the same as it used to be. So I just wanted to make sure that that was brought up before I go on to my next thing, which I really wanted to mention was, I think when you increase taxes, it's not going to deter people from maybe buying things as much, or maybe it's not going to prevent people from... Let me back up, because that was not very making sense. What I'm trying to say is, when you increase taxes, people are less likely to move here. People are not going to want to come and pay 76, I don't remember the exact number it is, for tax pickup, or for trash pickup, and additional money on the other increases we've had in taxes. They won't want to move here and won't want to live here. And if people aren't coming here, they aren't living here, businesses won't move here, there'll be less market, maybe businesses will go bankrupt, move out with less employees. And I just think it will really hurt the city a lot more than maybe you guys are thinking it will, and maybe I hope that there's a way for us to look into it a little bit more, because I feel whenever there's a decision to be made, and the people who are making the decision kind of hang their heads, you know, "I guess this is just what we have to do, you know, there's not really another option." To me, that's almost always only the case when there often is a better option. And really, if we pursued that option, and if we could present an idea, "We're excited about this." You know, we know Bristol, Virginia is in a struggling place, but we have a plan. We might have to increase taxes a little bit now, but later on, we'll fix it. This is just temporary. We have a plan, this is going to work, and so even though it might be bad for now, we're excited about fixing our city. And I just don't really see that at all, and I wish that we could do something and have a plan that makes us excited about making Bristol, Virginia a better place to live. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Meredith. All right, item D is adoption of the agenda. Looking for motion in a second, take action.
I move that we adopt the agenda with one change, if we could take item seven off the consent agenda and vote on it separately.
All right, so motion is to adopt the agenda with item seven as a separate voting item.
Second.
All right, motion from Mr. Holmes, but the change is noted, second from the Vice Mayor. Please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Pollard.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes. All right, regular agenda. Item one, accreditation presentation by the Bristol, Virginia Sheriff's Office staff report.
The Bristol, Virginia Sheriff's Office underwent a reaccreditation assessment through the Virginia Law Enforcement Professional Standards Commission on April 3rd through April 6th. The assessment team collaborated on what the office does and their operations as far as policy and procedure, equipment, trainings, and day-to-day operations. Also, the assessors noted that interactions with the community and their programs such as DARE and Project Lifesaver. As a result of the assessors' findings, Sheriff Tyrone Foster and the Bristol, Virginia Sheriff's Office received a certificate as an accredited agency by VLEPSC for a period of four years. The award was accepted by Sheriff Foster and Major Keith Pensinger on June 1, 2023. So we do have some members here to present that accreditation.
Y'all come right on up.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Todd Klingenfield. I'm the Program Manager for the Virginia Law Enforcement Professional Standards Commission. I'm here tonight on behalf of Terrence Cole, the Secretary of the Commonwealth, and Jackson Miller, who is the Director of Department of Criminal Justice Services. Back in April, April 3rd through the 6th, I sent a team of three highly-trained assessors to your sheriff's office here in Bristol to take a look at how they were operating and functioning. This team of assessors looked at 191 standards and over 570 individual bullets of your sheriff's office. Those standards and bullets were in areas of administration, operations, personnel, and training. They did ride-alongs with your personnel here, your sheriff's office personnel. They also took an in-depth look and inspected your property and evidence areas, as well as many files, reports, and other duties that your sheriff's office was operating in. They did a ride-along with Deputy David Venables, and one of the cool things about that, they found him to be, quote, "very knowledgeable in departmental policy." He knew the day-to-day operations inside and out, as well as his service area. He was excited to work for the Bristol City Sheriff's Office and served the community that he grew up in. A couple of other things that they did is they went around and they interviewed citizens that they might find in the course of their daily duties, as well as personnel there within the sheriff's office, and everybody spoke highly of Sheriff Foster's agency, as well as the work and the job that they do. The lead assessor on this was a police chief from up in Bridgewater College, and he said that this was a professional department whose pride characterizes an excellent administrative leadership. He said that Sheriff Foster had a genuine spirit about himself, and people were drawn to him whenever they encountered the public as a part of their duties. I thought those were some really, really strong words. This accreditation assessment that they went through is not only for Sheriff Foster here and his team, it's for this entire city. For him to open up his doors and his office when he doesn't have to, to have a team come in and look at every aspect of how they operate is tremendous, and for them to come through with flying colors is something for this entire city to be very proud of. Couple of things to think about. There's nearly 400 law enforcement agencies here in the Commonwealth, and currently, there's only 103 that are accredited through this program. So that says a lot, only about a quarter of those agencies, and one of them is your sheriff's office here. I would like to take the time here to get Sheriff Matt Ward up here. He's one of our commissioners, and he has a presentation to make.
Good evening, honorable members of the Bristol Council. My name is Sheriff Matt Ward, and I am one of the commissioners on the Virginia Law Enforcement Professional Standards Commission, and on behalf of the VLEPSY Board and the Commission, I would like to congratulate my colleague Sheriff Foster on this tremendous achievement. Congratulations, Sheriff.
I just want to say, obviously, thank you all for what you've done, and Sheriff Foster, do you want to say a few words?
Mr. Mayor and Madam Vice Mayor, Mr. Reeves and Ms. Bradlin, honorable members of council. When I was elected sheriff and took office in January 2023, 2022, I jumped a year ahead, you know, there was a lot of indecisiveness and indecisions on what the future held for the sheriff's office and the jail here in the city. And to be, to say that the staff was reduced by two-thirds is an understatement because of retirements and people looking for other jobs, because of the uncertainty of the jail. But when we found out that the jail was actually moving and closing, the staff that I had stuck with it. And the reason I bring that up is that all but two of them that we have on staff now never worked in the courtroom and courthouse and court, did civil process. They all worked in the jail. So we had to retrain everybody in our office over the next year and a half to be where we are today, and that's just a testament of what VLEPSY has come down, and we've opened the doors, and that's the type of people that we have working here in Bristol, Virginia. And I'm proud to say this accreditation is not for Tyrone Foster or Major Pensinger, it's for the City of Bristol and the Bristol, Virginia Sheriff's Office. Thank you for your support, and again, it's just a testament of the great men and women I have working for me, and as I always say at the end, that, you know, we're going to do whatever we can to see the future and inspire to be the difference, to help make Bristol, Virginia a good place to live. So thank you again.
Well, thank you so much, Sheriff Foster, and you know, you touched on basically what I would have said, you know, for the incredible amount of adversity that you and your department faced from day one, you all have done an incredible job, and it's really a testament, not only to you, not only to the major, but to every single employee you have, so we thank you, we thank you all. We're very proud of the sheriff's office we have, so thank you. Item two, approval of amendment to reallocate CDBG-CV funds, staff report.
I was going to take it, but...
Well, you can take it if you want. It's a long read, so you can...
Well, I'm going to shorten it up a little bit. Mr. Mayor, members of council, so in 2020, the City of Bristol, Virginia received additional special allocations to our CDBG grant program as a result of COVID-19 pandemic via the CARES Act. An amendment to the 2019 CDBG Action Plan was made at that time to allocate this funding in specific areas of the Action Plan. One round of funding went to economic development and public service COVID-related, and the second round of funding was put into public service, which was utility assistance and food vouchers. So not all of this money was spent, so there is a balance left of $85,076.70. So as a result of this, staff would like to reallocate the cumulative balance of the funding to public service projects and activities. Approximately $45,000 of this will be allocated specifically to assist Crossroads Medical Mission in the acquisition of property to expand their services, which will assist in responding to future pandemics. For the city to reallocate this funding, a third substantial amendment to the 2019 CDB Action Plan is necessary. Per the city's citizen participation plan, there will be a minimum 30-day public comment period, a Bristol Herald Courier newspaper public notice discussing the substantial amendment needed to reallocate funding, as well as approval by the City Council at a regular scheduled meeting. The public notice was placed in the Bristol Herald Courier on Tuesday, June 20th, 2023. Staff recommends a motion to approve an amendment to the 2019 Annual Action Plan to reallocate undispersed CDBG-CV funds for public services as presented.
Thank you very much. Looking for a motion in a second to take action on this.
So move.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Pollard, second from Mr. Farnham, council discussion.
Crossroads Medical has done a lot of good for our community, and I'm very glad to be able to support them in a substantial way. Do we have detail, this says that they're going to, the money's going to be used for acquisition of property. Do we have details of what that's referring to?
Ms. Cindy Rocket is here, and she can go into a little bit more detail. They are looking to purchase the parsonage of the Methodist Church and then expand their services there, but I'll let Cindy just explain maybe just the very specifics, so then you'll have a better idea.
Thank you, I'm Cindy Rocket, Crossroads Medical Mission. Thank you all for this amendment, it's great. So a year ago, almost exactly, Crossroads moved into, directly across the street, what was the Honeydew Building, and we're a free medical clinic after 20 years of being only a mobile clinic, freestanding medical clinic, and we provide care to low-income uninsured individuals in the community. And we had no idea that the property next door was a parsonage that was abandoned, kind of, that folks who were homeless, most of whom, we assume, were using drugs. It was not being used in the best possible way, and so we started thinking, this would be a great addition to Crossroads Medical Mission. We could, as Jay said, be able to combat any other pandemics that might come our way, offering isolation if somebody needed isolation, mental health services, education services, but we would be so excited to be able to purchase that property next door. The church has agreed to sell it to us for a very reasonable price, and then we plan to build on to that, to make it mental health, wellness, and anything that we can to combat future pandemics, and, and to respect the historic preservation that's necessary for this area. Does that get at the question? So excited, you all just have been such a blessing to Crossroads Medical Mission. We really appreciate your support and hope that we can make Bristol even a better place to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other discussion? Well, thank you, Ms. Rocket, for being here, we appreciate it, and we appreciate the work you do. If I hear no further discussion, if the clerk would call the roll, please.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Naif?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. All righty, very cool. Item three, fee schedule for the rental inspection ordinance, sections 50-515 to 50-530, staff report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. At the March 14th, 2023 meeting, City Council approved on second reading a rental inspection ordinance known as Sections 50 hyphen 515 to 50 hyphen 530. Section hyphen 526 gives the City Council the authority to set fees for the program. Based on the information that was presented to the City Council when the ordinance was proposed, a fee of first, $50 for the first inspection, and then an additional fee of $50 for each subsequent reinspection, if necessary, to bring the property into compliance would be assessed. The fee schedule is attached to your packet. Penalties are not included in this fee schedule since they are specifically stated in the ordinance, and they are kind of tied back to the building code. Staff recommends approval of the fee schedule.
All right, thank you very much. Looking for a motion in a second to take action on this.
I move we approve the fee schedule as presented.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Farnham, second from the Vice Mayor, council discussion.
Quick question, do we have a sketch of the city, of the different, the zoning, the areas?
We do that, we do have that now on our GIS, we have a layer for that.
Okay.
So...
Because I know we discussed it, and it's not for the entire city.
No.
And I had some people who asked me, well, why is it this area and not that area? And really, my understanding was it was kind of chosen on, well, based upon the age of structures, there's some older areas that may have some older outdated electrical issues, issues like that.
Correct.
That was kind of where it started, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Is the fee schedule then not part of the ordinance, or...
Well, the ordinance gave the City Council the ability to set the fees by fee schedule.
So the fee schedule is basically policy rather than ordinance?
Basically, I mean, we can come back and change that fee schedule at any time without having to do with two readings and waiting 30 days for it to act.
The ordinance just allows us to charge a fee and...
The ordinance gave you all the authority to have a fee schedule for this.
So the ordinance requires a public hearing and two readings and adoption, whereas the fee schedule, we can change it whenever we feel the need to.
Right.
That's correct.
All right, if I hear no further discussion, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Naif?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. All right, item four, approval of changes to naming policy for city-owned properties, facilities, streets, and structures, staff report.
Counsel, in probably, in approximately 2014, from the best that I can determine, a name policy was set for naming buildings after significant individuals in the city. The current policy requires a person to be deceased for at least three years before they can be considered for naming of a city-owned property in their memory. With council approval, the policy would change to at least one year. They'd have to be deceased for at least one year before this could be considered.
Right, thank you. Looking for a motion in a second to take action on this.
I move the approval for changes to the naming policy for the city.
Second.
All right, motion from Mr. Holmes, second from Mr. Farnham, council discussion.
So I know when it was put into place originally, you said, what, 2014?
I think it's 2014, that's the best that we can determine.
We, they had determined it was for three years, and do you know if there's any reasoning, like now if we're switching to one year? Have we looked at other localities and how they go about this process? Is three years like a standard? I'm just curious where they came up with the three years in the past and why they didn't do just one year.
You know, I've looked online at other localities, but I have not been able to find anything specific to a naming policy. So they may have policy somewhere, I just, I honestly just haven't had time to make a phone call to other localities to see.
I think the, I think the school board actually has a longer policy, 10 years. So I think some of it is, you know, just picking a number, you know, so I'm not sure where, I'm not sure where three years came from originally.
I saw some localities that had one year, like were contemplating moving to. When I was here, when this, in the audience, when the previous council adopted the current policy, it seemed, now, I don't know what discussions they had outside of the council meetings, but it seemed like they were mostly just picking a period. They wanted to have a policy, they wanted to standardize things, and I don't recall that there was a lot of discussion as to the specific time period.
So they didn't, as far as you know, they didn't have a policy whatsoever before?
Correct. That's my, that's my understanding.
Yeah, I don't think there was anything before this.
One year does seem to be fairly common with other localities.
If there's no further discussion, if the clerk would call the roll, please.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Naif?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. All right, into ordinances. Ordinance of second reading, ordinance 23-16, second reading, an ordinance to amend City Code, Chapter 78, Article 9, Section 78-252, pertaining to taxes on admissions levies. No one has signed up for public comment, staff report.
Counsel, the purpose of this ordinance is to increase the tax on the admissions from 5% to 7% effective July 27th, 2023. Pursuant to Code of Virginia, Section 58.1 hyphen 3007, notice was properly given of a public hearing on the proposed tax rates for the 2023-2024 fiscal year. The notice of public hearing was published in the Bristol Herald Courier on Sunday, June 11th, 2023. Citizens were given an opportunity to appear before the local governing body at the June 20th, June 20th, 2023, called City Council Meeting, after which the ordinance was passed on first reading, and staff would recommend passing this ordinance.
All righty, thank you very much. Now we're looking for a motion in a second for second reading, which I will remind you all can be in full or by caption only.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval on second reading by caption only.
Second.
All right, motion from Mr. Farnham, second from Mr. Holmes, council discussion.
Well, I just wanted to say, I mean, this has been a journey throughout our budget this spring. We do have a lot of expenses right now, many of them pertaining to the landfill. Some of them are one-time expenses, some of them are going to be ongoing expenses, and we've gone through the whole list, real estate taxes, trash rate, meals tax, lodging tax. This is another one that we've, that we've looked at and we're making an adjustment to, so, you know, again, my hope is after we get through some of these one-time expenses with the landfill that go away eventually, and then new revenue... with the landfill that go away eventually, and then new revenues are coming in, you know, we'll be able to discuss and be in a different boat one day in the form of, you know, voting to lower things rather than increasing things like, like we're doing right now. So it's unfortunate, but I think we know that we're in a position where we, we have some expenses and we have to pay our bills.
Just to be clear, does sales tax apply to admissions tickets?
You know, I'm unsure if the sales tax applies to admissions tickets or not. I do not know.
As with any time I, any time a lot of people buy a ticket, they just, you know, pay the full, you know, price at the bottom of the sheet, so I'm not, I've never noticed it.
And, you know, as we've discussed before in a previous meeting, when you're buying a ticket to something, I know there's always fees and charges on there. I never pay attention, whether I'm buying it from, you know, a locality of, whether it's, you know, a theater or it's online at Ticketmaster, but I pay the price. So I don't think, I don't think it'll hurt sales at all. I think if you want to go to that show, you're going to pay for that ticket. And if it does have sales tax, we know that at least hours on this, on Virginia side is lower anyway than it would be across the street.
A quick Google searches at least leads us to believe, according to the Virginia Tax Commissioner's website, that sales tax does not apply to tickets.
Okay.
That was my understanding. It looks like Ticketmaster typically charges twenty-seven percent of the ticket price and fees. So increasing ours by two percent is probably not going to make a lot of people change their mind.
So, hey, we're not Ticketmaster.
That's right.
This is great. You know, I'll say, as Councilman Farnham said, that during this, this budget cycle that we went through, you know, we've had a lot of difficult decisions we've had to make. And this, this goes for the other taxes, this goes for the admissions and for the cigarettes tax. You know, we are a financially cash-strapped, we're in a financially cash-strapped situation. And to pay for these things, sometimes you have to increase revenue. And the way that a locality can increase revenue is through taxes. And nobody likes doing it, but sometimes you have to look at the bad choices you have and pick the best one. So, you know, raising these taxes, going along with the other taxes we've raised is how we will be able to continue operation of the city and continue to do the very important work that's happening at the landfill for, for the fixes and for ongoing maintenance of it, so.
I know that a lot of people go to, for example, a theater occasionally as a release from their normal activities, their, a break from the daily stresses. And some people are disappointed at taxes being raised for that reason. However, on the other hand, I would much rather raise a, a admissions tax by two percent than have to raise something by two percent that affects people who are on a fixed income that have absolutely no way out of it. Some people are having difficulty just buying their normal monthly medical prescriptions. And I want to give them any relief we possibly can. As such, I am very much in favor of this. I don't like raising taxes and fees, but I would rather give people relief on their necessary things when possible.
And the way you explained it, it's similar to the lodging tax where, you know, maybe if it's a, some sort of concert that's happening, many visitors coming in from different localities that are spending money in the city. So it's not necessarily a tax that every citizen in Bristol is solely paying, or there's visitors that are contributing to it, so, yeah.
I do want to say too, this year, I'm going to kind of touch on what everybody said a little bit. This year, we've, we've had a tough cycle, we've had a tough budget. It's a great first budget for me to jump into. But we've had to, had to balance all the different ways the city can collect revenue, collect taxes to fund what we have to do as a city. It's been difficult figuring that out. But as Mr. Meredith said when he spoke during public comment, we got to, got to find that good, we got to find the positive, we got to, got to look to the next thing beyond this. And I hope, I truly hope and I truly believe that we're going to have to raise some of these rates, we're going to have to raise some of these taxes this year. Hopefully, next year, we can adjust, hopefully beyond that, we can adjust a little bit more. This is not the final, the final stab at tax rates, this is not the final stab at trash rates. But we're gonna, we're gonna see better days. I mean, we're Bristol, we survive, we do well, we're a good place to live, we're gonna, we're gonna pull through, so. Just, I appreciate him speaking, and I do think we need to focus more on the positive when we can, and I think we got a lot.
On that point, I am grateful for our city staff that have been able to make the budget work with as, as little pain as we are experiencing. Not that it's easy, but they were able to make it work, and I am grateful for them.
Hearing no further discussion, clerk would call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. Reading of the ordinance by caption only.
An ordinance to amend City Code, Chapter seventy-eight, Article nine, Section seventy-eight hyphen two-fifty-two pertaining to tax on admissions levy.
All right, now we are looking for a motion and a second for adoption of the ordinance.
So move.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Pollard, second from the Vice Mayor. Please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. All right, next item, ordinance twenty-three dash seventeen, second reading, an ordinance to amend City Code, Chapter seventy-eight, Article three, Section seventy-eight dash five-seven pertaining to cigarette tax imposition rate seller liable. No one has signed up for public comment. Staff report.
Counsel, the purpose of this ordinance is to increase the tax on cigarettes from seventeen cents per pack to twenty-five cents per pack, per pack effective July twenty-seventh, 2023. Notice was given on June the eleventh in the Bristol Herald Courier that a public hearing would occur on June twentieth. And at the June twentieth, called city council meeting, the public hearing was held and the ordinance was passed on for the second reading.
All right, thank you very much. We're now looking for a motion and a second for second reading, which can be in full or by caption only.
I move the second reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Motion from Mr. Holmes, second from the Vice Mayor. Council discussion. All right, hearing none, if the clerk would call the roll, please.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. Reading of the ordinance by caption only.
An ordinance to amend City Code, Chapter seventy-eight, Article three, Section seventy-eight hyphen fifty-seven pertaining to cigarette tax imposition rate seller liable.
All right, clerk call the roll, or actually, no, hold on. I need a council motion and a second for adoption. I must have jumped ahead myself, I'm sorry.
Move for the adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Farnham, second from Mr. Holmes. Please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. All right, on to the consent agenda. And as we noted at the beginning, we'll be voting on items one through six and then eight and nine, and then item seven, we'll vote on second. So looking for a motion on the consent agenda for one through six and eight and nine.
I move to approve the consent agenda, items one through six and eight and nine.
Second.
Motion from the Vice Mayor, second from Mr. Farnham. Please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. Item seven of the consent agenda, looking for a motion and a second.
Move to approve, item seven.
Second.
All right, motion from Mr. Farnham, second from Mr. Holmes. Please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Abstain. All right, there being no further business, we stand adjourned.